Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the October 8th, 2025 City Council Work Session. Thank you for joining us in this virtual meeting format. For work sessions like this one, there is no opportunity for public comment. And those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the Public Webcasts and Meetings Materials webpage of the City of Eugene website. Thank you again for joining us today. And I now call the October 8th, 2025 Work Session of the Eugene City Council to order, and I will turn it over to the Assistant City Manager to introduce our first topic, which is a work session on Automatic License Plate Recognition ALPR Camera System.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to share that City Manager Maderi is wrapping up a speaking engagement at the Oregon Recreation and Parks Association, so she'll be here very shortly. I also really want to thank Chief Skinner and his team for the work that they've done to be able to really bring the best information possible to share with Council as part of this conversation today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the chief.
Thank you, Matt. Let me get things up to share here that we need to share. Everybody sees what I'm seeing. Does that look good to everybody?
That looks good, Chief.
Okay, excellent. Well, good afternoon to everybody. For the record, my name is Chris Skinner. I'm your Chief of Police for the last seven and a half years, and it's been an honor and privilege to be able to do that. And I know this is a much anticipated work session, and we've got a lot of ground to cover today. If I'm doing my job, what I will do throughout this presentation is hit on some points that will be reminiscent of some of the public comment we've heard. I'd do my very best to answer some of the questions that maybe that we've heard throughout public comment that I've seen at Council as well as Police Commission. I won't stop and point those things out, but that information will be there for you as we move forward. As usual, I know that some of the most important pieces of information are going to come at the end of this presentation with Council's questions and comments. And so we're going to try and get there as quickly as we can. So I arrived seven years ago in this position. And when I got here to City of Eugene, one of the things that I recognized right out of the gate is that we were a little bit behind on how we leveraged our job in the public safety landscape. As a matter of fact, when I got here, we were still handwriting citations when many other agencies had found a much more efficient way and tech savvy way to be able to do that. And so what I've tried to look at is how can we leverage technology to be more efficient, especially when we're thinking about the lack of human resource and the lack of financial resources? That technology has to be a part of our solution when we think about how we leverage resources. ALPR is a crime fighting tool. There's no question about that. When we looked about at bringing this technology to Eugene, it was specifically around fighting crime amongst other things that we're doing. So this particular tech option for us, think of it through the lens of a police department trying to find ways to solve and fight crime in our area. The problem we're trying to deal with is really the geography that we have here. We are on the I-5 corridor. We have all types of crime problems in and around the I-5 corridor. That's one of the best and the worst things about where we're at. We have great accessibility, but that means people have accessibility to us too. And so that's the challenge that we're facing. Behind criminal trespass, there's a variety of property crimes. The number two crime trend that we have in our city is around the property crimes, and it's aggravated by that I-5 corridor, the access ingress and egress. And when we think about ALPR technology, it becomes specifically important to being able to address a variety of crimes, up to and including our property crimes. One of the things that we try to always do in a police department is we try to leverage our grants. And there's been much to talk about with the grant that has brought the ALPR technology to this particular space. On this slide, you will see that the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission, the CJC, had a grant in FY '23 through '25. There were amongst 18 agencies that were benefited from this grant across the state. Many of those have used ALPR as part of their grant awards amongst other things. But just a quick stop here to let you know that this is a state awarded grant. There's been some talk about whether or not this was general fund money, and I will tell you that this is not general fund money when it comes to leveraging this thing. The other thing I'd also point out is this grant was one of the more attractive grants because there's not a lot of requirements around this grant, not matching. There's no promise to keep the program ongoing. And so when you think about the really attractive grants that we're trying to accomplish, this was up there. And so we took an opportunity to leverage this grant money to bring this technology to Eugene. Not going to talk much about this, but I want to call attention to your timeline on the grants because there has also been some discussion about, you know, when did we start this journey on bringing this technology to Eugene? You'll see that there's a variety of dates on this slide that back in July of '24 is when we applied for the CJC Organized Retail Theft Grant. And as you walk through the process of getting the grant, you will see here that we touched all the bases when it comes to this. Up to and including following our own city process, our own city internal process for procurement through City Attorney's Office and ISD to make sure that we were doing, especially with software, doing the types of security checks and reviews for them. And we were able to finally get the agreement and implementation in early 2025 of the grant. But I felt like it was important for Council and everybody that's watching this particular work session to understand that this has been a work in progress as far back as July of 2024, when we wanted to take advantage of this opportunity. Let's talk a little bit about what Flock Safety ALPRs are. We've heard from a lot of different people, some opinions about what they think they are, and maybe in some cases what they don't think they are. There's a lot of assumptions around what's captured. What you see on your screen here is actual a screen grab of actually what the technology captures. These are still photography cameras. They are not video cameras. They do not have a pan tilt and zoom capability. They are pointed directly at the open public right of way, and they simply are triggered and captured by vehicular traffic and specifically license plates, as you can see. Each picture shows the open roadway. It shows the vehicle. It does call out the specific license plate. You'll see here that these are, we used our own vehicles as example here, grabbing them as we're going through the intersection or crossing a certain location. The photograph or the cameras are not triggered by pedestrians, are not triggered by anything other than something as large as a vehicle. But I will stop here and say that there is an outside chance that if a bicycle is in the roadway and it might be, if it happens to be towing, say, a trailer with a lot of debris in it, it might be large enough to trigger the camera, but even then it would be a still photograph. And none of these cameras have AI facial recognition capability. I think it's important to note that the work that we've done with the Police Commission has prohibited the use of facial recognition in any of our technology that we have. And that's really good work that the Police Commission has done over the last couple of years with some of our other types of camera products and technology products that we have, whether it be our drones, our camera trailers that are so widely successful and sought after in our business community, that none of those leverage AI or facial recognition. But I just wanted to specifically make sure that we understood that this is the type of photographs that we're capturing. This is the actual data that's being stored, is an actual picture, date and timestamp for a location and a time, a with the back of the vehicle, rear of the vehicle only, and a license plate. Now, you'll see on some of these are maybe where you happen to capture the front of an oncoming vehicle going the other direction. But that is more specific to the configuration of that intersection than it is to what this camera is actually looking to capture. Other conversations and comments around storage. And as you can see on this slide, that the Flock Safety ALPRs are stored in the Amazon Web Services Government Cloud. And with that Government Cloud service, it's got a variety of acronyms and security measures that are in place. You'll see those in paragraph two, where we talk about SOC Type 2, SOC 2 Type 2, and SOC 3, and those compliance evaluation evaluates organizations, internal controls. The ISO is an international standard for security management, and it goes down through a laundry list of other types of certifications around HIPAA and FERPA, which is the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act compliance. They undergo a hard deletion data after 30 days. And those compliance, the FedRAMP and ITAR and NIST 800, those are federal requirements on how the devices are wiped to make sure that they're cleanly wiped, and they all comply with the federal compliance when it comes to the deletion of the data on that 30-day rotation. Again, a lot of discussion around data sharing as well. And so many people are thinking about, hey, chief, we're not so much worried about people accessing the data and hacking our data, because if we're paying attention, we've got a variety of things that our data is out there on that we're hoping don't get hacked. I mean, the Social Security Administration, a variety of banks have been victims of such hacking with much more robust personal identifying information than what ALPR has, which in fact has no personal identifying information. So they've moved away from being less worried about the breach of the data and more around the Flock Safety ALPRs and the network and the data sharing. And the thing that I think would be important to point out here is that we have opted out of the nationwide data sharing network. That means that no entity outside Oregon can access EPD's image database. And the only other agencies that can access our database are the ones that are listed here on your screen. And the ones listed here are either current Flock customers or have a data sharing agreement with Flock where they can do that. And we'll talk a little bit more later on in the presentation, kind of what that looks like from these people. But we have got this locked down to just the state of Oregon. That was important to me because I feel more confident in having our data shared with other agencies that are also adhering to sanctuary laws in our state, ORS 181A20, and hoping that they are adhering to those and trusting my colleagues that that's in fact what they're doing. And so we have this very narrowly focused to the state of Oregon and again have opted out of any kind of nationwide search when it comes to the data that we're collecting. The contract was a real major bone of contention with many people. You know, likely the original contract that we evaluated and we felt comfortable with was a general contract that's been used for a number of years nationwide, but we recognized through a lot of really good public comment and questions that maybe it doesn't fit our unique situation here in Oregon, especially as a sanctuary state and city. We heard loud and clear from people that there were some aspects of the contract that just felt a little bit too general in nature. I think the word "squishy" was used more than once with dialogue with me. And so we embarked on a pretty ambitious endeavor with Flock to adjust the contract to better meet our needs. And what you see here on the screen is just highlighted some of the language in the original contract that people were really, really struggling with. And to call that out more succinctly, it was language identified such as disclosing to law enforcement authorities and who those might be, and maybe more important, the declaration of emergency or emergency situation. And who can actually declare an emergency that would break open the sharing of the data? We felt like that that was a little bit too general, and so we went back to Flock to better understand how we might adjust and change our contract language to better meet our needs here in the City of Eugene. Through a lot of dialogue and really quite honestly, a lot of real high levels of agreement from Flock wanting to get us to yes on something, we have adjusted the 5.3 language to be much more robust. You'll see the new 5.3 language here in front of you that highlighted some of the things that have been changed around this. It's a much more detailed 5.3 than you saw originally. And to call your attention specifically to some things that I think not only you, but our public would want to know is that we talk about appropriate legal basis and that administrative warrants are not an appropriate legal basis to ask us for our data. Maybe more importantly embedded in there is that we don't recognize Department of Homeland Security as one of those entities with an appropriate legal basis to ask us for our data. And then we also removed the language around emergency situations completely out of the contract so that we don't have kind of that generality of who can declare an emergency. That's been a big conversation about who can declare an emergency and whether that allows for access of our data, and we've completely removed that from our contract. So thank you, you know, just a little bit of gratitude right now for the City Attorney's Office that helped us with this and ISD that really helped us with this particular part and the next slide that you're going to see, which is going to be new language that we have in the contract. So we took it further, and we identified some areas that we wanted new language in the contract. And areas of new language really addressed three key issues. That's the issue of anonymized data. And you can see here how they agreed to ensure that the plate numbers are among the potentially identified and strip for data de-identification. We also have security breach obligations. In the original contract, it was just a blanket 72, and now they've agreed to within 24 hours, but not to exceed 72 hours, that they're responding and making those reasonable efforts. That's different. And then, of course, the data storage and transfer. It was important to us to make sure that it was within the lower 48 states and that it was not being housed somewhere else and in compliance with the FBI and CGS requirements, which governs all the data that we share or all the data that we store and we collect needs to be CGS compliant through the FBI, and that's Criminal Justice Information Systems. And so we've got a lot of controls around that. So we were happy with the new language that Flock was willing to put in there to help us feel better about these three specific areas. And again, thank you to the CIO and ISD, specifically ISD in this area because there were some areas of concern that they had that we wanted to address on their behalf. Let's stop here and talk a little bit about accountability and oversight because there's, you know, again, been a lot of talk about, you know, what is it that the officers are using this for? What are they seeing? How are they leveraging this? And, you know, this is a busy slide, but there's a couple of areas that I really want to call your attention to. The first thing I would call your attention to is the two highlighted areas. So this is the view that the officers at EPD see when they want to search for a license plate. And really, if you think about the data that's being stored, think of it as being thousands of license plate pictures being stored that really are largely useless as they sit in their database until we ask them to be useful. We have to ask the system the right question before any of the data is really useful. And that right question is, have you seen this plate? And in order for us to do that, there's two things that we have to accomplish. Number one, on the left-hand side of that highlighted area, is the reason for the search. And that dropdown menu has a handful of reasons that they have to click on, all of which, except for two, are criminal reasons, like criminal investigatory reasons. There's a missing persons dropdown in there, which we certainly want to be able to identify vehicles that have missing or endangered persons. And then there's an administrative test option for us, just to administratively test our side of the system. But maybe more important, on the right side of the highlighted area, is that officers have to legitimize the reason for their search. That's where they would put in a case number or in some cases a CAD number, which is Computer Aided Dispatch Number, that links the search back to a legitimate law enforcement purpose. So think about it from that perspective. Anything that we do in this system, anything that anybody does in the system, even with the data sharing we have within the state, needs to be, and we demand it has a legitimate law enforcement purpose, and there has to be that. We have to articulate that reason. And this is the area on our portal that helps us articulate that. We have a command directive out there that requires this information, and we're seeing high levels of compliance from our officers with respect to doing that. And it's really important for us, much like the other databases that we access on a daily basis, that already have audit mechanisms kind of built in place to make sure that we are able to link back our request for the data to a legitimate law enforcement purpose. Also point out the lower right-hand portion that through some of the work that our Senator Ron Wyden has done with Flock Safety is that there are filters that have been put in place that prevent search where it looks as if it is anchored to immigration or reproductive health. And so that is a proprietary type of algorithm that they've built in that will immediately alert and/or halt a search in the event that somebody's trying to use it for that particular purpose. And so I appreciate the work that the Senator's done on this and the work that Flock has done to identify a way to filter out those particular requests. Continuing with accountability and oversight, there is a transparency portal that is public-facing. This is up and running now. Many of our public records requests actually have come as a result of people kind of digging in and digging in around this transparency portal and asking questions to better understand what it is they're seeing. We are currently in ongoing discussions with the Auditor's Office on how they might help bring higher levels of accountability and maybe more robust accountability to this. I'm really pleased with my discussions with the new auditor, Craig Radinsky, on how we think maybe they might have a role in this. And certainly as in anything, regardless if it's this database or any other databases, if we ever get a sense that somebody has used the database inappropriately outside of our policy or for personal use, we have a very robust mechanism to identify that, to alligate and to build allegations around the misuse and/or the violation of the policy. And then, of course, an investigatory arm of professional standards and hand-in-hand with the Auditor's Office to hold people accountable. So this fits neatly into the system that we already have here in Eugene, which is holding officers accountable. And so I'm very confident that if we have any misuse of this database as well as others, that we have a system that will catch that and that we'll be able to better understand how that happened, make any adjustments that we might need to make sure that that doesn't happen again. You've heard me reference other databases and the information that we have. And every day in the work that we do, we are accessing data. I mean, we are an industry that is data heavy. We are collecting a ton of information about people that maybe in some respects is part of our industry-specific work tools, but maybe others don't know about it. This pie chart kind of gives you a sense and brings some context to how often we're leveraging data in our daily work, and this is over a 30-day average. You can see that the ALPR data is at 1% of all of the data that we're looking to do. And I think the piece, as a new piece of equipment, we are, you know, a new tool. We're certainly enamored with it. We certainly are trying to use it as a crime fighting tool. We're trying to catch suspects when it comes to this. I mean, the studies suggest that about 70% of all criminal activity has a vehicle involved at some point. And there's two things when we're doing investigations that we're always asking people is what is the suspect's description and what's a vehicle description associated with a suspect? And so as we go through that, we will continue to use ALPR, but it's not being used nearly as much as you might think. When you think about computer-aided dispatch and all the information that we're gathering there and going back through CAD and looking at premise history and what we've seen from certain addresses as far as the types of calls for service, we're going through the huge officer safety issue to be able to do that, to know where we're going back, to see if there's some violence that has occurred there in the past before we show up. Our records management system, which is RMS here down in the lower part of this graph, is our internal records management system that has all of our police reports. This is where people with public records requests, we're pulling reports out of RMS to be able to fulfill those requests. The Ops Center is a portal that we use to help leverage regional data around maybe somebody that has been involved in law enforcement action in another jurisdiction. And then lastly, NCIC and DMV is that, you know, those are databases we access to find out if people are wanted, whether they have a valid driver's license. And what's interesting about the ALPR is that the ALPR database is not connected to any of the other databases that have personal identifying information. So it's a standalone database. It has no PII, nor does it check the other databases for PII. So some people would say, well, chief, you took a picture of a license plate. Don't you automatically know who's driving the car? And the answer is no, because it does not cross-reference the license plate against Oregon DMV or any state's DMV to see who might be the registered owner. So it really is devoid of any personal identifying information, but just a way to kind of level set how much we use this data. Last couple of slides, and then we can get to some of the discussion. Thank you for bearing with me because it's a lot of information that we're trying to get through. I've heard a lot of voices over the last several months in a variety of different venues. You've heard from me. You've heard from, I've had an opportunity to chat with counselors, and I appreciate those counselors that actually have taken upon themselves to come and chat with me about this. I'm always encouraged and open to have this conversation. We've heard a lot from our communities in community forums and public testimony. But the one voice that we haven't heard is the voice of the victims that are being served by this technology. This is an example of these numbers that you see on the screens. These are victims that have had their really tough and emotional moment in time, their bad day, that ALPR has been able to resolve that for them. And you can see down the list of types of things that ALPR has helped us to solve when we think about this as being fighting crime, trying to create a sense of safety, trying to bring a sense of justice to our victims. These individual numbers should be seen as individual victims that are happening. Just point out that on the right-hand side, 63 of these arrests have been felony arrests. And that's a significant number just because we're not talking about petty crimes that we're using this for. We're talking about really serious crimes that this is being used for. And of course, the highest volume of those crimes is stolen vehicle. We are able to recover stolen vehicles at an unprecedented pace, unlike we've ever been able to before because of how quickly we're able to identify those vehicles. And as I switch to this last screen and we talk a little bit about some of the ways we've tried to publicize some of the successes that we see, the positive outcomes we've seen, you know, you'll see a variety of different things on this screen. Everything from in the early stages, being able to help solve a suspect vehicle homicide that happened out in the county to suspects in burglaries and menacings and even an alleged rape suspect with a teenage victim. These are all really impactful things that this tool has helped us be able to bring resolution to these victims. But with the volume of stolen vehicles, just imagine how tough that is for a family. Maybe that's their only mode of transportation stolen out of their driveway. And to be able to return a car back to the family before it gets completely destroyed, and that might be a part of their livelihood, it's really rewarding when it comes to being able to find a way for technology to serve victims of our community and through a victim-centered approach. And so just wanted to remind you that there's part of that story that sometimes gets missed. And I think it's incumbent on me to make sure that I help, you know, everyone in the community that has a voice in this be heard, and that's my opportunity to do that. With that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you to help facilitate questions and comments.
Thank you, Chief. Very much appreciate that presentation and the work that EPD has been doing. As you mentioned, also work with staff, with our City Attorney's Office and ISD. And very much appreciate the focus on addressing questions about the use of this technology in our community and things that may or may not be different here from what has been reported in other locations. And also looking forward to this continued discussion. So with that, I'll open the floor for Council Discussion and Q. Counselor Yay.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Chief. I really appreciate you coming and doing this with us today. I'm just going to go through the questions from the poll that didn't make it in, or at least I didn't catch them. So my first one- Um, catch them. So my first one is, um, you covered a lot of ground, so that was great. What is the cost of this system to us once the grant is over?
Uh, that's a good, that's a really good question. Um, I'll have to get back to you. I think I've been so focused on how much the grant we awarded the grant for and. You know, the cameras are owned by Flock. And so let me, let me um, do some quick research and find out post-grant. Uh, how much it costs us. Now, what I will say is that CJC has opened the second round of grant and the. I think the expectation is that they are expecting us to resubmit so that it continues to be grant funded into the future.
Okay, great. Um, so. Uh, I was reading about, okay, so you were explaining that the person puts in a reason for the request and then a case number. So does then. That case number get checked before they are getting access to the data? Or is this more of an automatic thing? If you put in the case number, you put in a reason, you get your data and the check happens later?
Yeah, the, the way we, the way it works, just because of the dynamic nature of the work that we do and sometimes the exigency in which we do our work. You can imagine when we get a stolen vehicle, we want to, uh, once we get that case number, we want to automatic, we want to almost. Instantaneously start looking for that vehicle. So. The reason for the check goes in, the case number goes in, we're able to see that data. Uh, on the back end, we can go back and, and we will validate, if need be, we will validate that. Case numbers for us, especially internally, are sequential. And so it's, it, it, in some respects is a bit obvious that it's a. It's a right and correct case number, but yes, it's on the back end that we would check that.
So I'm not so much concerned about local folks as you have very nicely highlighted. We have an excellent oversight. System here in Eugene and I think. You do an excellent job of hiring officers that are doing the job for the right reasons and have excellent training. I'm more concerned about someone somewhere else. So essentially, someone could put in a, an authorized reason and put in a number that is a case number. And they will be able to access data. We could go back later and verify whether that was accurate, but they would have the data already.
Just with the agencies that we're sharing with and that we, that have an agreement we do that with. Now the. The, the, the interesting piece of, of this that, uh, that I would share with council is that right now we have those. We have it opened up to allow for data sharing with those other agencies. We can be so, we can lock this down so specific to it just being Eugene only. If that's something that we feel is important for us here locally is to be able to do. I would suggest more of a lame county approach. But we have the scalability to be able to lock that down to make sure that outside agencies can't access our data.
Okay, and um, okay, so my, my other question is, and I, I don't know if this is. So I understand there are hot lists. I wonder if you could explain how that works and. How things get on the hot list and how often are they checked to make sure that it's not like old requests?
That's a really good question. So essentially a hot list is a, is a list of that we would, we would enter in, uh, and mostly it's, uh, it's validated through obviously. A case number and making sure there's a legitimate law enforcement reason. Um, our supervisors are taking a look at these hot lists and making sure that they, that's in fact a valid reason to have them. On the hot list. Many of our hot lists are loaded with stolen vehicles uh, that we're, that we're looking for. And then um, really it's, it's, it's our job to make sure as the vehicle is, much like in LEDs and NCIC, but that's entered. A stolen vehicle is entered into that system. The minute we recover a stolen vehicle, we have to go back into those systems and, and clear them out. So this is very similar to what we have. In LEDs and NCIC uh, for that particular database as well.
Okay, um, do you, have you guys investigated whether there's any liability to the city? If um, there is a search that ends up being something that should not have been done?
Um, not, no, in the sense that. Um, I'd have to better understand a, a search that shouldn't have been done as long as there's. If an officer is able to articulate a lawful law enforcement reason for the search. Uh, that would be, that would be, uh, you know, there could be a variety of those things. Now. I can go back in history and talk about, for instance, as long as we've had access to databases. Law enforcement has had from time to time, people leveraging the databases for personal reasons. Um, and as we, as we're made aware of those particular situations, you know, the, the, the appropriate. Um, disciplinary process ensues, but as far as liability for utilizing as a search, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay, all right, that's fair. Um, so I just. I'll just be honest, I didn't know much about these cameras when this first came up and um. I've learned a lot over the time and I've learned a lot today. This is really helpful. I, I think that my main concern with this is. I, I like that you went back and got some, oh, probably gonna need a second round. We'll see. Um, that you got some, you know, changes to the contract. They, they seem like great changes. But when it boils down to it is, I'm not sure that I can trust this company. They, they seem to have a track record. Of violating, of contracts being violated, where, where. Multiple jurisdictions have found that their data was used in a way that the contract, they, it should not have been, but it did. Um. So I'm not sure how I can trust this contract, uh, if both, both parties aren't necessarily going to stick with it, but um, I'm curious to hear what people have to say and. Yeah, that's it for now.
Counselor Keating. Counselor Keating.
Second Mayor, sorry, taking myself off mute and, and scribbling notes. I'm surprised I was. Uh, I'm, I'm number two in the queue. Okay, can my time start now, please? Um, Chief, thank you. I've got a, a lot of questions and I'm probably going to need a second round. Um, I share Counselor Yay's concerns, um, less about. Uh, the guardrails that have been set up locally and I would encourage for the time being until this contract runs out. Yes, I appreciate your perspective, your leadership and your uh, suggestion. That uh, keeping our data within our own community is, is prudent. Uh, I'm concerned about neighboring jurisdictions up and down the I-five corridor who have shared data. Uh, with either a third-party entity or with the executive branch. Um, I too, uh, like Counselor Yay expressed, have great concerns about the data going to other agencies while. EPD may not recognize certain uh, federal or executive. Um, or, or federal agencies or appropriate entities to access the data stored and collected by law, local law enforcement. Uh, I'm greatly concerned that uh, such a sensitive security surveillance contract. Was not shared with this body on the front end. Um, at this time in history, um, when there's so much. So many questions revolving around for-profit third parties accessing our, our data. Um, so many concerns shared with council about a surveillance state. Um, agencies operating under the direction of the executive branch. Um, or even the executive branch itself thumbing their nose at recent judicial decisions right here in, in Oregon. Um, possibly accessing uh, our data, our movement, um, is deeply alarming. Um, Chief, could you expand on your thought process around? Uh, A, uh, the misuse guardrails that can hold back bad actors accountable? B, what prevents? Third-party entities or, or federal agencies from using passwords of, of local law enforcement? And C, just yesterday, there was a, um, there was an article published on 404 Media that. Uh, illustrated that a woman in Texas, though those filters. For searches exist that you, you referenced about searching for uh, immigration or reproductive health. Just yesterday, it was pop 404 Media reports that a woman in Texas was targeted. Um, by police apparently considering uh, reporting or, or, or building a case, a death investigation into an, uh, into an abortion. Could you comment on those pieces, please? And I will need a second round, Mayor.
Counselor Keating, I'll certainly do my best. Um, you are the master of, of. Of complex questions, multi-part questions, and so I'll do my very, very best. Um, one of the things, one of the things that's not lost on me is this nervousness around the company and, and what I've, what I've tried to ask people to do is. Separate the, the benefits of the technology, the technology, the usefulness of the technology and, and whether or not that. Uh, that can be separated out from the nervousness or anxiety around the company. Um, and so I certainly am, I'm certainly uh, aware of that. Like in many things in our personal lives and our professional lives, what we do is we enter into contracts, we try and get our contracts. To a place where we feel like we can both live with them and then at some level, there's some level of trust that both parties are going to adhere to their side of the contract. Um, I, uh, I have read some of the publications. Uh, I have not. Uh, I've not had any colleagues of mine in the, in the, in circles that I've been that have been able to articulate. Any real world examples of how the, 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 the data has been either breached or leveraged. ALPR has been around for well over a decade. Many agencies have been using ALPR. Many agencies in sanctuary states and sanctuary cities have been leveraging L, uh, ALPR. Um, there's a, a really good NAACP uh, letter out there from Oakland, NAACP in support of ALPR because it takes the bias. Out of some of the work that, that law enforcement does. So. Uh, part of what I've tried to stay focused on as your chief is to uh, try my best to, to. To be mindful of some of the hypotheticals that could happen. Uh, but have to make my decisions and, and my decision-making is deeply rooted in the practical of what I see um, is the benefit of, of the community. Um, and so the last thing I would say is if we're talking about the, the, the case that happened in Texas, I think it was either Jackson County. Uh, if I remember correctly, the, the pieces of that that aren't often shared is that. Yes, in fact, for the reason of the search, the word abortion showed up in that. But in that particular case, if it's the same one we're talking about, Counselor Keating, in that particular case, if you talk to the law enforcement professionals in that's, in that jurisdiction. It will be a situation where the, the, the young lady, the, the woman, it was a self-administered type of procedure and that was actually the family that asked the ALPR to be used. To find her uh, because of her safety. Uh, so I think, you know, there's so many, so many things that, that we're trying to take into consideration. Uh, with, with regards to the facts of each and, and each and one of these cases that we see in the media. Uh, that right now I'm just trying to be solely focused on the crack.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, thank you for this presentation, Chief. That was chock full of information. I, I just want to say I have the utmost faith in you. And trust in you as our chief and EPD and the police auditor. I think you all are doing an amazing job, great job of keeping us safe. Uh, I applaud uh, all of your actions, uh, especially with ICE recently. Uh, I applaud your tremendous use and leveraging of technology. I think it's been just simply amazing of bringing us forward. Uh, but my concern and skepticism um, is not reflective of all your efforts and your intent and the work that you guys do. Uh, um, context of where, what, where we are today is really important here and um. In my review of this program of policy, my concern and criticism, criticism stems from lack of trust with the Flock Corporation. Their actions and protections of data, I find very troubling, even with stronger contract language. I don't have trust in them. More importantly, I've become more and more concerned with our march towards authoritarianism with the Trump administration and, and I didn't start there. Uh, but over the last eight months, I've become more and more alarmed by their actions. Um, and it's in that context that I view this surveillance policy. And I'm concerned uh, with what happens to this data and who will get access to it and how the surveillance could be used and be expanded. And how maybe you may be abused by others, not by us, uh, and EPD. So given what I see as a very troubling uh, uh, march towards authoritarianism, I, I don't want to even collect. The, the, the data or the images. The analogy I use is the, is that the fact that we don't collect any of the data on immigrants. We simply do not collect it, uh, collect data on people's status and then, and then other folks can't get access to it and they can't abuse it. Um, and if we don't collect it, they can't get it. So despite the effort of the chief and the staff and all the contract language, it really comes down to a matter of trust for me beyond EPD. And uh, I simply don't trust Flock and I don't trust the Trump administration, given where we are today. Um, and continuing with this program just isn't worth the, the benefits that we're seeing. It was, it, I, I, uh, I'm very, very concerned about this. Um, you didn't address the, the termination. Clause in the contract. Could you address that, Chief? What, uh, what does it say? What, what would be the process and implications for terminating your contract?
Yeah, Counselor Zelenka, this is where I'm going to apologize because I had that sitting in my inbox and then I spent all my. Discretionary time trying to get my technology to work. I know it's sitting in my inbox. I know the city attorney's office has weighed in on. On that, uh, on that. What I will say is that. Likely there's a termination clause and Catherine might be able to be my phone a friend here because I know she did that work, but, but what I will say is that. Through the CJC and this grant, it's a bit. It's a bit unknown to what extent they might ask us to pay this back. Um, that is to their discretion based on this. The one thing I do know. Just having been in this space in the state of Oregon for so many years and understanding my state, state partners is that. Uh, suspending this contract, stepping away from this, uh, since the, the money has already been spent, spent certainly um, erodes. Um, our ability to be competitive in future grant processes. So I'll, I'll ask Catherine if she can help me out.
Certainly. When it comes to um, the grant and the um, state's actions regarding clawback of the money or future grants at risk. Is um, it's a separate issue from just what, how, if we were to proceed forward in seeking termination of the agreement with Flock. Which is I think part of what you're asking about, Counselor Zelenka. Well, there's a, there's a number of provisions within the contract, but we would pursue from the outset. Is um, seeking mutual termination um, of the contract. That's a provision that's available so we could negotiate with. Uh, Flock um, around potentially getting, um, because we prepaid um, with the grant money, potentially getting refunded. But it would be a, a negotiation with them through that mutual termination and, and as you've heard, they have been receptacle and, and to our requested contract amendment. So. That is what we would per, pursue from the outset. If those is, if that is unsuccessful and the, and the, the cameras are owned by them, we would not be going up and taking them down. The timeline for that and how that would be done would be part of those mutual termination uh, negotiations. And that's the way we pursue it.
Thanks. I need another round, Mayor.
Counselor Kishinsky.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Chief, both for the presentation and everything that you do for our community. I'm deeply appreciative of the work. That you and the rest of EP does to address crime in our community and to help keep us safe. I recognize that law enforcement needs tools to accomplish that goal. But all tools have risks associated with them and we need to carefully evaluate if the benefits outweigh the risks. I think if we were having this conversation about the risks and benefits of Flock this time last year, I would have been in a different conversation. But we can't really ignore the extraordinary times we find ourselves in. We have a federal government that is targeting and demonizing our transgender neighbors. That is conducting immigration raids on wildland firefighters actively engaged in fighting fires. And detaining longtime residents while they are risking their lives to protect our community. We have a national government that is attempting to send unneeded and unwanted National Guard troops into our neighboring cities. Over the objections of state and local leaders. Unlike our law, local law enforcement, I do not believe that they are trying to keep our community safe. I believe that there's significant risks of this data in other hands could and would be used not to help protect our community. But to try and cause harm to our community members. I believe and trust that our local Eugene Police Department would not intentionally misuse this data. Um, and that we could put local safeguards and policies in place. I believe that your motivation is to keep our community safe and I appreciate the hard work that you do. But the fact of the matter is, is that even with the updates to the contract, Flock retains significant control over this data. And to be blunt, I don't trust Flock. They are a national for-profit company and their motivations are different than ours. I put a lot of thought into this and listened to and considered a lot of different perspectives. And we have to balance. and we have to balance the risk that this data will be misused by others and make our community less safe with the potential that it has to help us solve crimes. And given the current national environment and the venue that we're working with, at this time, I feel like the risks outweigh the benefits. This is the wrong tool at the wrong time, and I can't support us continuing to use it. So I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to move to direct the city manager to turn off the Flock cameras.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Kucinski and Counselor Zelenka. We do have other counselors in the queue for this first round. Could we continue that discussion before coming to a vote? Or it was counsel, our city attorney? I want to give the counselors who'd already previously raised their hands a chance to speak.
Well, now that a motion has been made and seconded, that is the motion on the table. And then, so the discussion should be going to the motion. If Counselor Kucinski wants to withdraw the motion in the second, just to allow the remainder of the conversation and then put it back on the table, that's an option. But at this point, that is the motion on the table and the discussion should go to the motion.
Okay, thank you. Then counsel, we will move to discussion of the motion on the table. We have a queue in order. Counselor Leach.
I would point out it's a very broad motion, so that can be very much a limitation on the conversation.
Yeah, I think that, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the motion, Counselor Kucinski. I agree with pretty much everything that you've said. I do have a concern with the way that the motion is phrased because I think it's a little vague in terms of what the meaning or implication is. What do you mean by just turn off the cameras? Do you suggest a termination of the contract, a pause of the contract? If we can get a clarification of the motion, is that allowed?
Counselor Kucinski.
Yes, I worked with the city attorney on the wording of the motion. It's intentionally directing sort of a more immediate action and leaving the operational details surrounding what happens with the contract and all of those sort of pieces to the city manager and her role as city manager who does operational things like that.
Okay, thank you for the information.
Thank you. Counselor Groves, discussion of the motion.
Well, I actually wanted to discuss the whole issue and get my questions answered too, but Counselor Kucinski has decided to usurp our ability to be involved in the discussion. So, you know, until I get my questions answered, I'm going to be a no vote on this because I feel that my voice has been taken away from me and I resent that.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel similar to my friend, Counselor Groves, in that I have a number of concerns about this, and I think Chief would back me up here saying that the first questions we got about the deployment of this came several months ago via email, and I called him up directly first thing and had a long conversation with the questions of my own. So I had some concerns. I will probably not vote in favor of this as well because we're not having a broad enough conversation before we're making a decision. But I want to ask the city attorney for some information, and that is, help me process a little bit where the operational issues involved in this question versus the policy issues are, so that we're not actually operating afoul of the charter by, for the first time that I'm aware of, stepping into both the chief's and the city manager's role as those who have operational control as opposed to policy control and doing so while we're trying to recruit for a new city manager, telling them, hey, gosh, we could step in at any time if we don't like the way you're operating things and make a different decision. Where's the line between operational control and policy control in this question, Catherine?
It's challenging, to say the least. I think that, I mean, your charter is very clear that the city manager is the one that has the authority and does execute contracts, and that's what this is. So ultimately, moving to, I mean, a motion that is, even to anything that involves a contract is simply a recommendation to your employee. That's all it can have the effect of doing. And your employee is the one charged by the charter that gets to make the determination of what contracts are executed, how they're executed and all that. That is the way it is set up. So what this motion and the only way under the charter that it can be interpreted is is simply a recommendation to your employee that you would like, this is the act that you would like to happen. You cannot effectuate that happen through your policymaking authority under the charter.
And as a hypothetical, let's say our city manager decides the benefits outweigh the cost of everything involved, both financially and otherwise, which we can't really afford, the paying back of hundreds of thousands of dollars. What would be the outcome? The council is left then with the choice of demanding that the city manager do that, in which case they don't have a legal authority to do it, but their only authority is whether or not the manager stays on. Am I correctly understanding this question? We either fire them if they disagree or...
You could. Your lever to pull is that you terminate a city manager if you do not like the direction in which that city manager is going. But there would be no way to force, under the charter, a specific action. You're requesting, you're expressing what your overall desires are and that the city manager has the authority to do it or not to do it. Then where your authority lives is whether that city manager continues to be an employee of the council or not. And then you have all of your, it certainly wouldn't be a for-cause termination and it would trigger if you terminated a manager for these reasons. There's all the contract provisions within a city manager's contract that are standard that would be triggered, including some that are financial consequences as that as well for terminating a city manager for simply not doing something.
Which I just want to say I think would be the dumbest possible thing we could do, but that's just my opinion. I only have 30 seconds left to say that for me, to understand this within the context, each and every person who's ever spoken to us at council during public forum, I agree and understand their concerns, but I balance that with knowing that everybody's, almost everybody is carrying a smartphone in their pocket, which is a personal tracking device that they carry with them every minute of every day, and unless they very decidedly turn off location services for every single app on their phone, it's tracking where they walk every single day. And nobody controls those databases, and that's just a number of other...
Counselor.
I'll speak to you in my second round, so thank you.
Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Clark, to write about the very devices that we carry around with ourselves, differences we opt into said voluntary invasion of privacy as opposed to the fears and trepidations that have been expressed around a third-party entity or even the executive branch abusing the data that's been collected and stored locally. My question to the chief is, when is the current contract up for renewal?
Counselor Keating, without the contract in front of me, I don't know. Catherine may have the contract in front of her. I don't know if it was for fiscal year 2325, so we applied in July of '24. I'm trying to remember my slides. We were awarded and implemented in March of '25. I honestly don't know how long that carries us through. Catherine, do you see it there?
Yeah, the initial term, let's see, I'm sorry. It's two years from the date of first operational camera is the term of the initial contract.
So we should, for purposes of this conversation, call that May of '25 is the first operational date, so it would be May of '27.
Okay, so Counselor Kucinski's motion seemingly would be a more immediate halt, and if that motion failed or was amended, the contract would be renewed in May or prior to May, but that, okay, I'm wrapping my head around that. Question two, Chief. How many cameras are operating in and around Eugene?
I believe I'm going to be off by one or two, but I think it's 56.
Okay, and does that not include the cameras that are established at like Fred Meyer, Home Depot, the Bigfoot Beverages strike location? Are those Flock cameras or those cameras that belong exclusively to EPD?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. All I can speak to is the 56 cameras that we put up on the public right-of-way are the Flock stationary cameras through this grant. If private entities have their own cameras up, that is a private endeavor and not associated with EPD.
So the license plate readers, is the intent, is it not, of engaging in this activity with Flock? It's to read license plates?
That is the purpose of our contract with Flock is to capture the license plates of the vehicles on the open public roadway.
Are other persons who don't have a license plate, who might be traveling via bicycle, is their data being stored or collected or are they being targeted or investigated?
With these fixed cameras that are not pan tilt zoom, the only thing that triggers them is a vehicle in the open public roadway or a large moving object, and I use the example, maybe a bike towing a trailer with a lot of debris, might trigger a snapshot of that particular thing, but it's not triggered by bicycles, regular bicycles and pedestrians. And if we looked at where the cameras are pointing, those individuals would have to be actually in the lane of travel before it would even come within the purview of the camera.
Thank you. How many other cities have ended their contract with Flock? I know cities of Denver and Austin come to mind. Are there any on the West Coast or throughout these United States that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, and I would just caution because the cities of Denver and Austin haven't terminated their contract. They're in negotiations with Flock right now, but that, in checking with Austin and Denver specifically, they are in some active level of participation with Flock. They have not just wholesale canceled their agreement.
Though their city council is very well signaling what we might signal today.
Correct.
Interesting. That gives me a lot of pause for concern. Chief, I do want to thank you for taking pieces out of the contract that you initially saw as red flags, the emergency situations, the disclosure to law enforcement authorities, et cetera. I see the entire contract and potential for bad actors who are not local law enforcement to be a red flag. I will very likely be supporting Counselor Kucinski's motion. I'm sorry, we didn't have an opportunity for a full complement of conversation before we addressed the motion, but at this point in history, I'm incredibly concerned about a surveillance state or about entities outside of Eugene using or abusing our movement, our data, and our images, et cetera, for nefarious reasons.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, former city councillor Ken Tolanar, it used to be the Bureau of Governmental Research Services at UVO, and helped write the model code. And I once asked him, what's the difference between the policy and management? And he said, if it's controversial, it's policy and therefore under the purview of the city council. So I always take that in heart. The motion is not determine contract, the motion is to turn off the cameras. The next steps of what happens after that would still to be determined. So in essence, what it does is it creates a policy of not using surveillance cameras. The city manager would then be, the city would then be in violation of policy. And usually, I've never seen a city manager pursue a policy in contrary to a council majority, so it's really scare tactics to go to, is firing the city manager at this point, and I don't even see that as a possibility. So given that, I don't think that this motion actually limits any discussion in any significant way. I would allow Counselor Groves to ask whatever question he wants. He should feel obligated to do that. But I also wanted to clarify the comments I made about where I see us with the Trump administration and how I didn't start in that position, but eventually got there. It started with questioning the election results, not even a shred of evidence. And then the actions to suppress voting, the gerrymandering to try to secure a majority in the House, and then questioning the validity of vote by mail, which I consider to be a giant success. And then on top of that, the Trump administration's actions to silence its critics like Jimmy Kimmel and Colbert and other journalists and calling for the revoking of ABC and NBC's licenses, and using the Department of Justice to seek revenge on his past opponents. They've also created an ICE force that operates out of unmarked vans, wearing masks, showing no identification, and snatching people off the streets, putting them into detention camps, sometimes children, sometimes citizens of the United States. It's happened several times. So he's creating a personal army without accountability in the ICE force is how I see it. And then finally, and most importantly, recently using the US military in our cities, under the false pretense that there's unrest and an insurrection is mind-boggling to me. They're putting us on the verge of martial law, putting military troops in our cities, in particularly in Portland, is unwarranted, unlawful, unconstitutional, and very dangerous. And that's why I'm very concerned about where this is heading and the abuse that might come out of a mystery like that.
Counselor Evans.
Yes. Oh, let me see if you can, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Counselor.
Okay. I want to ask the city attorney a question. Would this be, would it be more appropriate if we asked for a pause in the usage of Flock cameras pending a further policy discussion at the council level? Because I don't think, one, we're going to get through this today, given the number of concerns that councillors have around the usage of Flock cameras and also the storage of data. The storage of data is one of my biggest concerns because I know that if you order something online, just a simple, I ordered a dozen socks online, and I've been all kinds of emails from all kinds of different companies that want to sell me socks. I only want 12 socks. I don't want, you know, to get tons of advertising and entries to spend more money on something I've already spent money on. So we do not know, and correct me if I'm wrong, who Flock sells data to, what kind of data they're selling them to, and since Flock owns the cameras ostensibly, and I might be wrong about this, but I think they own the data too that they're collecting, I would like to have a deeper policy discussion about, you know, how we deal with this and how do we put good city policy around the usage of this technology? Because this is going to continue to come up over the years. There's going to be new technologies that are emerging in the next five years that we have no rules or regulations around. And so this gives us a very good opportunity to be able to create and shape policy that currently, and I spoke with the police auditor last week, currently does not exist nationwide. We don't have a set of best practices around how policy and data is collected and used by other municipalities and other jurisdictions and the storage of that data and the elimination of that data. Because you know, anything that is gathered in a digital framework... Because you know, anything that is gathered in a digital framework is, um, will stay there forever. It will not go away. So I have serious concerns about that. City Attorney?
Um, it certainly would provide a motion that said to pause the, um, usage of the ALPR cameras, um, and then with some direction to return X, Y, and Z would certainly provide some additional specificity and some clarity on why it's being paused and what, what you're seeking, um, in response. A, a, a possibility there also is you have a police commission that the council has designated as a body that works with your police department to come up with policy. And so an option would be pause usage of the ALPR cameras with a direction to your police commission to work on coming up with a policy, X, Y, and Z. But those, that would be using some of your existing processes that you have in place if that, that's just one option.
And I propose that amendment and would be the maker of the motion welcome to, be welcome to an amendment to her, her, uh,
Uh, I, I would not be, uh, looking for that particular amendment. However, what I would say is that, as I spoke to before, this intentionally uh, spoke to the immediate action that we wanted to see or that I wanted to see, which was to turn off the cameras. The step that comes next after that, uh, I, I leave up to, this motion leaves up to the city manager and the chief. Um, and that could be turning off the contract. It could be them saying, hey, we've created some conditions where we think it might make sense for us to see about turning the cameras back on. So I think that that's, that there is space within the existing motion to, for the city manager to, to come back with some of those policy changes. So.
Uh, I have a question.
Uh, Counselor Zelenka, just one moment. Counselor Evans? You still?
I, um, I, I understand where, where Counselor Koschinsky, Koschinsky's coming from on this, but I think it would be more appropriate if we had a pause, you know, to the usage of the cameras and not a termination of the contract at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Evans. The city attorney, I'm gonna need a little bit of clarification on what just occurred because I did hear a second in the discussion, but I believe the discussion was between Counselor Evans and Counselor Koschinsky regarding an amendment.
So Counselor Evans was originally seeking a friendly amendment to the existing motion that's on the table, which is to turn off the cameras. Counselor Evans, in, as I interpret it, you've made a, a substitute motion, um, that would move to pause, um, usage of the cameras pending additional conversation, which was seconded. So now the motion that is on the table is a substitute motion, which would replace the existing motion. And it would be a motion to pause the usage of the ALPR cameras pending additional conversation.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Mayor, at some point, I'm gonna want to speak to all of this just before y'all start voting and going down a track. I've
Thank you, City Manager. We're, we're still trying to get through a one cycle with each point of discussion. Very much appreciated. Um, I have Counselor Yay and Counselor Clark who were in the queue, and then our city manager who'd also requested to speak before a vote. And we now also have a substitute motion, which this continued discussion will be related to.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, actually, I was gonna ask the city manager, um, because at this point, I'm, I'm a little confused about what we can even do? Like, are these things that are being bounced around even options? Like, I know we don't own the cameras. So, um, I was just hoping that maybe, um, our city manager could, uh, weigh in on, you know, what are some viable options at this point? Were, were we to recommend something to her?
Yeah, so that's a little bit different than where I was gonna go with my comments.
Or other things she would love to say.
That I'd like to say. Okay, do you want? Mayor, are you okay if I?
Yes, please, City Manager. Please answer that question. Yes.
First, I, I do want to give, um, I want to say thank you to Chris and his team for the work they put into this. And it was a lot of work in a really short amount of time. Sorry I wasn't here to open the work session. And I also really appreciate all of the gratitude that you've shared and you've tried to draw a very, very clear line between your trust of Chris and EPD and your concern about the company. So I, I want to say thank you to that. I do have, um, I do have some concerns and, you know, part of what I'm concerned about just generally in this whole conversation is we have tasked Chris, sorry, I'm not calling you chief. We have, we have tasked the chief and his team and many teams across the city with really trying to ramp up our public safety concerns. I get, we get hammered about this all the time around metal theft and theft from stores and there is like embracing technology and all of our different work. We're, we're embracing it across the board, across the city. Um, feels like an appropriate way. It's hard to imagine how we're actually gonna make a difference without that. So my concern is, you know, we go down this path and I think the reason the charter language in some ways is set up the way it is, in particular to keep you from individually talking to me about this, is that we don't end up in these, we like this company, we don't like this company. I want my friend to get this contract. I don't want your friend to get this contract. And so we try to keep, I try to keep it, and every city manager, I think, tries to keep it very sort of, um, direct around what is the technology, what are we getting, and, and how can we actually better improve the contract language? Given that, I'm hearing all of the concerns. I'm not, um, I don't want to weigh in on that. I just want to, I do think that the motion to shut off the cameras is, is quite vague because I don't understand whether that means I get to turn them back on, Chris gets to turn them back on, at what point we would turn them back on. I didn't. And also, are you okay with us choosing a different company? If it's about Flock, we could have chosen a different company. We went through an RFP process. There's probably legal issues with that. But that's really unclear to me. Um, I would appreciate additional time to have a work session to talk about what are the options? Like, what could we do and what are the? Is there a threshold where you would be okay with this and that we can actually keep solving crimes? And is it, that's, that part is unclear to me. And, and I think that's, that's the ground that feels messy and as a city manager feels, doesn't feel great, I have to say.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Um, I, I will say that we've been solving crimes for a long time without this system, so I'm not sure that's a fair, um, a fair statement that if we get rid of this, we're no longer solving crimes. But I think your other questions are very valid. Um, the way I thought this work session would go is that in this case, that, you know, this is a contract and that is totally in your realm. And my assumption was that we would be making a recommendation to you. Um, and then you would respond to that recommendation at some, you know, probably at a future work session. So it seems like maybe that's not what everyone else thought was happening, but I'll just share that's what I thought was happening. Um, uh, so I will tell you to your question that another company might, might be okay with me. If there were differences, I think a lot of my concerns are that they, um, that this data is available to folks outside of our immediate area. Um, if this was an EPD, um, program, much like our drones, right? Our drones go around and take pictures and we can use them for things. I don't have a problem with that. That's internal. If it was more of an internal process, I would have fewer concerns. Um, it's possible that there's another company out there that has a better track record that, um, would be something I might consider, um, if it addressed some of the many concerns. Um, so yeah, I don't, I don't think this is a, this, um, type of technology is totally inappropriate. We use like red light cameras are also, um, a form of surveillance. I think you could, you could argue and, you know, I don't have a problem with red light cameras. Um, so, uh, you know, what, I don't know if we're still recommending or not. I guess that's a, go answer any question, but if, if, you know, from my seat where I'm sitting, my recommendation is I do not feel comfortable with this company coming into our community. I do not think that they should be trusted with our data. I think they have a track record of not being trustworthy and considering, um, the actions that the Trump administration is taking, not only in Oregon, but across the country. Um, I think this system will make people in our community, especially LGBTQ and people that are immigrants or even have green cards or naturalized citizens less safe.
So I could speak to your question around recommendation. That would be how I would suggest the, the motions be, um, made, which is you always make recommendations to, you, you make recommendations to your city manager all the time. That is much preferred to a direction that something happened. So, um, you know, if that's a friendly that you're making to the current motion on the table, because the current motion on the table is, um, a motion to pause the use of, um, the ALPR cameras pending additional conversation. If a friendly is, uh, you're moving to recommend a pausing, that is more consistent with the manner in which you engage your city manager.
Yeah, I'd be willing to do that. I, I think it's more appropriate.
Accepted by the second.
Counselor Evans, is that accepted by you as the maker?
Yes.
Thank you, all three of you. Um, Counselor Clark and then Counselor Zelenka, you are, and then Counselor Evans, you are last in the queue. We have nine minutes remaining in our work session and we have a motion on the table to complete.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just say thank you quickly to my friend Greg. This conversation obviously will take considerably longer for us to talk about the best policy. I appreciate uh, the way Greg framed this, rather than us getting into a large argument where there are certainly points of disagreement between my friend Alan and I. I, I would, I appreciate, I think our role is to turn the temperature down on this particular issue and have a logical and reasonable and civil discussion. I think it's reasonable for us to say a recommendation to the manager is we need to have more of a large scale policy discussion about information use and, uh, and, and how it's made use of in the city in multiple ways and in multiple departments. And I, I think that's a more reasonable discussion for all of us to have. So I, I hope my colleagues will, uh, agree to this motion and, and pass it. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah, thanks. Um, responding to the city manager, this is more about the policy of using surveillance cameras than it is about Flock. Um, I'm not sure there is another company that could do this that would pass muster with me, but, um, I'm not sure there's a difference between what Eliza said and what Greg said, except for, uh, uh, really. Um, Greg, did, do you mean that you're recommending that the city manager pause the use of the cameras? And that they, that she should bring back next steps to, on, uh, on this issue? Is that what your, the essence of your motion or?
That, that is the essence of the motion. I, I would like to have a broader discussion about the policy implications of the use of cameras. And I'll tell you why when I get my turn to speak.
Great. Um, yeah, and I, I don't see much difference between what you're saying and what Eliza said, but I'll support this motion because I think it's basically the same thing.
Counselor Evans?
Yes, let, um, for, just, just for purposes of, of, of past information, um, I've been here for forty years. And forty years ago, and probably not still had been going on for a while, um, the Eugene Police Department was taking photographs of black men coming through downtown Eugene and had a book, an album, a storage album of photographs of black men coming through downtown Eugene in the late nineteen eighties. And I think somewhere they began this practice. They started taking photographs from a perch in the atrium building. Um, my understanding was that when we found out about it, that the police no longer, uh, or they said that they destroyed, uh, that book and that information. I don't know whether that happened or not. Uh, but again, it goes back to the issues of inappropriate and what I would also consider possibly illegal surveillance activities on the part of, uh, police forces, whether that be Eugene Police, Land County Sheriff's, FBI, State Police, whatever the case may be. So I think that we need to have specific policy re- language around the usage of technology, the storage of technology, and we need to have a longer and broader discussion about that. But you can go back and verify what I just said because that did happen. And I don't know whether that book still exists or not.
City Manager, you are last in our queue.
I'm good.
Thank you. Uh, then with that, we have a motion on the table to recommend a pause of use of ALPR cameras pending additional conversation. And Counselor Keating, I'm trying to move us to a vote, but do you, would you have additional discussion?
I, I did. I, I'm trying to wrap my head around the difference between the two motions. I, yeah, it's my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Koschinsky's motion has some immediacy and urgency to it. Um, while that, there, there may be a similar sentiment, I'm fuzzy on the timeline of, uh, of Counselor Evans' motion. Are both, do both have an immediate pause? If so, I would be willing to support Counselor Evans' motion, but, uh, and I, I, I recognize the merits of having a longer discussion, but I want that longer policy discussion to, to stem from the action we take today. And pretty clearly, I can, I can count, as anyone else can on this call, there's a majority of councillors who have expressed significant heartburn and frustration with, uh, with our data being shared outside of our community with a third party entity who we have significant amount of concerning questions around. So I'm inclined to support Counselor Koschinsky's original motion because I interpret it as having far more urgency.
Counselor Keating, I was going to ask for a clarification. Are you requesting a friendly to say immediate pause in that recommendation?
My, 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 Mayor?
Yes.
Um, my, the, the, the theme of my motion would be an immediate pause pending a further council discussion about policy around the usage of technology and the usage of, of specifically Flock cameras in this case. So it would be an immediate pause. It would be consistent with what Elijah Koszinski has already put on the table. But additionally, we would be looking at a, a policy uh, discussion and recommendations that would come back to this council so that we could begin to have the kind of, uh, safeguards around the technology uh, that is continuing to emerge on a daily basis.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Mayor, may I hear from the original motion maker, please?
Counselor Koschinsky?
Uh, yes, I would agree that the first parts are functionally the same that I am, my motion requested that the city manager turn off the Flock cameras. Uh, Counselor Evans requested that they pause the use of them. I would say that the main difference is, is that Counselor Evans' motion continues and says, here's the next step after we've done that. Um, and I believe I heard the city manager, please correct me if I'm wrong, um, uh, since, whereas my motion looked vague, what was, what would come after that? Throw in the switch. Um, and so the, I heard the city manager say that she would like some additional what comes next. Did I, did I hear that right? And so that makes me more inclined to, to support, uh, Counselor Evans' motion because it provides that additional direction of what comes next after the immediate action's been taken.
That's great. So in your interpretation and this council's direction, does a pause mean turn off the cameras?
Yes. Yes.
Right. Can I, can I hear from the city manager perhaps, or, or the chief? Or, or the city attorney?
I, again, it's a, it's a recommendation, um, which is consistent with how you make other motions to the city manager, but you are making a recommendation that the city manager pause usage of the cameras, um, which means turning them off, right? The only way you can pause usage of the cameras, which means turning them off, right? The only way you can pause usage of the cameras is to turn them off. I think what the motion from Counselor Evans makes clearer that was not clear with Counselors Koszinski, is that, you know, would the next step be, you know, actually moving to termination? Would the next step be? And what Counselor Evans' motion makes clear is, no, those aren't the next steps. The next steps is going to be additional conversation with the council. There is no, there, if Counselor Evans' motion passed, there would be no expectation of the council that we turn them off and we move to terminating the contract, or we move to figuring out what happens with the grant. It would simply be, we pause usage of the cameras until there's additional discussion about what ultimately will end up happening.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm not going to let perfect be the enemy of the good. I wish the verb was stop, usage, rather than pause. Nevertheless, I can glean that we're all kind of rowing in the same direction and singing the same song. I'm inclined to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Groves. And Counsel, we are at time. Counselor Groves, I'm guessing you would like to make a very short comment.
Just quickly, just quickly. To me, we're glossing over the fact that Counselor Evans' motion is a recommendation, which is in keeping with charter and our authority. Counselor Koszinski's motion is directing the city manager to do something, which I think is stepping over our lines of authority.
Thank you, counsel, for that discussion. We'll now bring this motion to a vote. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and the motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
And Mayor, just from a technicality and process, that was a substitute motion, which means it now replaces the original motion. So that is now the motion on the table. So you need to take a vote on the motion on the table.
Thank you, City Attorney. Two steps to wrap up, everyone. Now returning to the motion on the table. The substitute motion has been accepted. All in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and the motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you, counsel. We knew today would be a robust conversation. We knew there were a lot of important questions to answer. And I think the gratitude to our staff, to our chief, to EPD for the work that they are doing locally. I really appreciate the time that council took to emphasize that, and also to bring these other incredibly important questions into a public conversation. And so with that, that concludes our first agenda item and will conclude our work session today. With that, I close the October 8, 2025 City Council Work Session, and we are adjourned.